Madam Clerk, will you call the roll, please?
Ms. Dr. Chase?
Here.
Ms. Decatur?
Here.
Ms. Hazard?
Here.
Ms. Healy?
Here.
Ms. Hollaback?
I'm here.
Mr. McCosker?
I'm here.
Ms. Young?
Here.
Madam Chair, you have a quorum.
Thank you. Would you please stand for the Color Guard presentation by Mountain View High School's Marine Corps JRTC and Pledge of Allegiance.
Brother, I'm a legend. Present. Fellas?
I pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Over here. Fellas? Ready, cut. Ball out.
We'd like to thank the Mountain View High School Marine Corps JRTC cadets, Devon Peters, Jesse Scott, James Russ, and their commander, Ethan Knight, as well as their instructors, Lieutenant Colonel Richard Barnes and Sergeant Major Alan Tanner. Do we have a motion for approval of the agenda?
Yes, Madam Chair, I would like to move to approve the agenda, but with one amendment, that we remove 4.01 awards and recognitions since that has been canceled.
Thank you. Do we have a motion? We have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
Is that Ms. Hazard's second? Thank you. Dr. Chase's motion, Ms. Hazard's second. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. That brings us to staff reports, unaudited end-of-year and first-quarter financial reports. Mr. Fulmer.
Who's got a... Is that a... What is that?
It's crickets outside the door.
Good, we need it.
Don't kill it.
Getting the microphone? I mean, where is this thing?
Just pay attention, Mr. McCosker.
Oh, thank you, Madam Chair. I got a little... I'm misfocused.
I know, I know.
I knew... Actually, I knew it was going to take three minutes to get this up.
Can you make that any smaller, Mr. Fulmer? Oh, better.
Working on it. So, two really quick reports, updates for you guys. An update as we get closer to finishing up our FY 2019 year-end. So, this top chart, this was presented to the Fab last week. This top chart is our revenue for the year. Ultimately, in summary, most of our revenues line up our other revenues, mainly our insurance proceeds that are about a million dollars over. We don't budget for insurance proceeds. That's for property damage and items like that that typically go right back into repairing whatever those proceeds were for. Ultimately, our total revenue budget was 1.8 million dollars over. Our federal funding, another one, was about a half million. That was related to Medicaid funding. On the expenditure side, this is obviously for our adjusted budget for '19 and does include our expenditures and encumbrance totals. In total, had available budget of 1.7. So, ultimately, in total, we had about 3.5 million dollars in what we would consider the carryover or revenues exceeded budget. There was also some items that don't show up on the books, but it's related to fund balance, carryover, and the way we shift for some Gatsby items that ultimately bring that number up to 4 million. So, you don't see it here, but it's an adjustment to our fund balance. So, ultimately, our total carryover, and we just booked that entry with the county last week, was just over 4 million dollars.
Can you tell us what Gatsby items are?
Yeah, so, we have historically booked up prepaid expenditures, and so, we hold money back at the end of the year to cover our pre-pays for the following year. So, if we have a, let's say, like, an 18-month software contract, we would only book up in the current year 12 months, and then we would have six months that would go to the next year. Gatsby's allow you to... That's general accounting principles, and you can still do it for Gatsby. But, just because of the complications and how many different pre-pays we had, the Gatsby's allow you to not have to book up your prepaid expenditures at all. And just so for simplicity's sake, we talked to the auditors, and they said, "Hey, you can get rid of that, no worries." So, we took that off the books, which ultimately increased what our carryover was at the end of the year. I want to point out that even though it's roughly 4 million, the only amount that we could have even spent at the end of the year was this 1.7, because that's what was appropriated by the county. The additional revenue of 1.8, we would not be allowed to spend unless we went back across the street to the County Board of Supervisors during the year and asked for an additional appropriation.
And why is that?
So, we get a lump-sum appropriation from the Board of Supervisors, but it's only for the total budget of 289.6 million dollars. So, just because you have additional revenues in doesn't mean we can spend it. We still have... We're restricted by that spending authority.
Does that include the insurance proceeds that we are...
It does. So, they have an exception in their policy where they can... I believe the county administrator can actually do an appropriation for us if it's for insurance proceeds.
And I remember incorrectly, some of that extra funding was because we had more students than projected, that our ADM was higher?
Yes, ma'am.
Average daily membership?
Yeah, so that was part of our state funding and sales tax increase.
And will it be December when we get the final audit?
Yes, ma'am. Yes.
Ms. Healy, or Mr. Fulmer?
Yes, ma'am.
First, if you could make sure that these are attached to the agenda item.
Yeah, yeah, I apologize.
I like to see these ahead of time, I'm sorry.
Yeah, no.
So, just the one thing that strikes me, and I take a long time with numbers, but the instruction line, we adopted a 219.3, we adjusted to 219.2, and our encumbrances were 217.8. We don't have to have an explanation tonight, but it always concerns me if our expenditures are about 1.4 off, at least on the instruction line. And that may just be because it's... We didn't hire, you know, we didn't hire people. But, for me, that, if I... If you ask when I'm looking at this, that, to me, is the classroom. And I just want to make sure, and if that, you know, I just want to make sure we can tell our story there. You don't have to tell it tonight. But if I would just look straight at those numbers, I'm always going to look at instruction.
Yeah, I can tell you that the bulk of that 217 or 219 million is instructional salaries. So, the 1.4 million dollars is primarily savings from salary lapse and attrition. I don't have the exact percentage or dollar amount of what that is, but...
Okay. I mean, I'm just saying, you know, I think we want to be able to... And then I see with transportation that there's a 1 million... Let's see.
100,000. And that was...
Okay, I'm trying to just do my quick math. Between, well, 15.5 is the adopted, and then our encumbrances were 16.5. Okay. We can talk about it later. I'm just trying... Like I said, this stuff takes me a while to pick up.
So, yeah, and I will point out that the adjusted budget includes our re-appropriated purchase orders from the end of FY '18. So, the money that we had on purchase orders that was not yet spent. So, if we ordered buses in June of 2018, but the buses don't come in until August, September, October of 20...
'18.
'18, so into FY '19, you'll see that the adjusted budget went up from 280... Or, the original budget was 289, and the adopted budget was 298. That big increase is our re-appropriated purchase orders that roll into the next year. Because it's going to actually hit, for accounting reasons, the year that we spend the money, not when we put the encumbrance in.
Ms. Young?
Yeah, Mr. Fulmer, you know my question always, other. So, if we could...
Yeah, so our other expenditures are... I actually talked about this during the Fab. I want to maybe tweak how we show this. That is mainly our workers' comp transfer that we transfer into our workers' comp fund. So, it's budgeted in the individual lines for employee benefits. And then, there's an other line, which is fund transfers. So, we have to move it into a fund transfer line, and then we transferred into the workers' comp fund. So, it's a little confusing on this. So, what I explained in the Fab means I actually want to talk to the auditors about, is there a better way that we can show that, just to make it a little bit cleaner?
Anything else?
I just have one question. So, that... So, .06 is the 1.4 million for the salary lapse and on the instruction budget. Is that... Do you anticipate .6 for the end of the... I mean, which... Usually, it's a lot more than that. It's usually 1. something for a salary lapse.
So... Oh, you're talking about the percentage?
Yeah.
So, the... These numbers, when we look at the adjusted budget, you know, because at the end of the year, we would have moved money out of the budget and put it into the... To cover items on our 3R list that come to the board to approve. So, when it's looking at the adjusted budget percentage, you're looking at the adjusted budget, not necessarily the adopted budget, which then has the encumbrances, the carryovers from the prior year. So, I can tell you that our salary lapse ended up right around, in total dollars, around 3.5 to 3.8 million dollars for salary.
Right.
For salaries and benefits.
Okay, yeah. And that makes sense. I mean, that's the amount of teachers at 75,000 or whatever. Is that what we're saying?
About 66, 67 is what we were budgeting.
66 is an FTE, and then, so, those vacant FTEs for the year, and then you hire half-salary long-term subs, or... And then you end up with a salary lapse. Okay?
Yeah, and so, in FY '20, we increased our substitute lines to help cover those long-term subs. Then, we also increased our salary lapse line to clean it up a little bit, because we were... During the year, in the past years, we were moving money from our salary lines to cover our substitutes. So, we went ahead and budgeted, assuming that we were going to have some laps, and then increased our substitute line to cover those long-term subs.
Thanks, Madam Chair.
Anything else? All right, thank you, Mr. Fulmer.
All right, so that was just report number one.
Unaudited end of the year, now the first-quarter financials.
So, as if you guys recall from prior year's first quarter, I'll give the disclaimer, we're real early in the year, so there's not a whole lot to report. But I want to let you guys know that currently, there are no state revenue changes other than anticipating possibly additional funds from having the additional students. But there are no known changes from the state. Those will typically come once the General Assembly meets in December.
And can we just highlight the fact that our unofficial enrollment on September 30th was 225 more students than we projected to have? And we projected about 400 more students? So, we end up with about 625 more students than last year, right?
Yeah, so, I'm going to jump to the next slide real quick, because it shows our actual enrollment for September 30th '18 and then our unofficial enrollment for September 30th of this year. And I believe it was about 270... Or, sorry, 670 kids. And we... So, historically, we've always used the... What the state projected for our ADM number. And actually, for FY '20, we went above what the state was projecting and kind of split halfway between what the state was projecting and what Stafford County Schools' Demographics Department was projecting. And we're still projecting higher than that. So, currently, on the expenditure side, tracking within the accepted variance, just pointing out that because our vacancies are similar to prior years as far as total, so if you look at percentage, you obviously have more teachers this year from prior years, but about the same number of vacancies. So, doing better there, but at the same time, as far as when it comes to total salary lapse money, we're projecting it'll be similar to prior years. These are... Some of these are newer slides, and the reason we're adding these is these are information that the Board of Supervisors is requesting that they receive in their quarterly report as well. So, trying to get the information to you guys prior to giving it to the Board of Supervisors. They amended their financial policies last spring to ask for this information. So, our licensed staff teacher vacancies. So, this is mainly just... Mainly teachers, but our licensed staff. There were 49 vacancies at the end of the first quarter. 38 of those were covered by long-term subs. Eight were covered by other licensed staff. So, if we have a high school teacher that is picking up an extra block, and then we compensate them for that. Seven of those, eight were high school math. And I know what the other one is, but I can't recall it at this time. And then, we had two other resignations that aren't technically included in that 49 quite yet. They're not actually vacant yet. They're just known that they're coming up to be vacant. They're still in the position, but leaving soon. The additional positions from what was budgeted, we've added six teacher positions, one special education teacher, the AP, I believe, at Drew Middle School, and then a bilingual admin assistant. Any questions? For... I tried to give you guys an update on our funding contingency. We start the year with $500,000. Our current balance is 285. Some of the bigger transfers was 85K for the security consultant. Those you guys approved just a couple meetings ago. We did have, with an increase in our ADM, we increased what our school site allocation would be. So, the schools get a dollar amount per pupil that they have in their school. And that was 105,000. We've had some other smaller miscellaneous items of 25,000.
Questions?
Other questions? Just one quick one on the ADM fix for 105,000. Chris, was the... Will the state give their 5,000-whatever amount, like, mid-year sometime, or...
Yeah, so, we report our numbers September 30th, and then we also report on March 31, and there's going to be an ADM calculation. But they'll come back in December and give us updated projections, more or less, based on our September 30th enrollment. So, I anticipate them coming back with projections of giving us additional state funding.
I'll follow on to Mr. McCosker's question. So, because in our budget priorities, we talk about how the state sort of pays us, like, after we've incurred the expense. Does the state pay us the ADM for the whole school year? Or is this some rolling average of when they decide to pay? Because we, you know, we're talking about that on how they calculate things over a three-year period, and that may not always...
It would be for the whole year. So, they take an average membership for the entire year. So, ultimately, the ADM isn't... Is different from enrollment. So, our September 30th enrollment's probably going to be a little bit higher than what our ADM is going to be. So, our enrollment fluctuates during the year. The state is going to take an average of that after we continue to report. And then, so they get a final ADM calculation that they'll release in April, May timeframe, and they give us our final calculations in June for what that payment will be for the entire year. But it's calculated based on the entire year. It's not like a prorated amount.
So, Mr. Fulmer, you said that it could actually be less than what our enrollment number is. But if our enrollment number, September 30th, if come March 30th, that number is even higher, and the average daily is higher, it could... I mean, it wouldn't be less that we would get, right?
Correct, no.
So, the term "less" is still more than what we...
Budgeted, yeah.
Were budgeted for, but, yeah, okay, yeah.
Okay, any other questions? Thank you, Mr. Fulmer.
Thank you.
That brings us to citizen comments. Dr. Chase?
Individuals wishing to comment at this time may do so by responding to the general invitation by the board. Speakers shall identify themselves by name, address, and organizational affiliation if the spokesperson represents an organization. Speakers shall also announce the purpose or topic of their comments. Three minutes shall be allotted to speakers. The chairwoman reserves the right to restrict the total citizen comment received at any particular meeting to a predetermined maximum number of minutes with the approval of the board. Citizen comment which is profane, abusive, or which threatens imminent physical harm shall be ruled out of order by the chairwoman. Although the board provides the opportunity for citizen comment, individuals desiring to register complaints against division employees or division programs, services, or activities may also utilize the procedures outlined in Stafford County Public Schools Policy 1113, Public Complaints.
Thank you, Dr. Chase. And we're going to adhere strictly to our three-minute rule here. When you come to speak, the clerk will hit the button when you give your name. And that means the green is you have three minutes. The yellow comes on when there's one minute left. And when the red comes on, the time is up. So, I'm going to call out the speakers three at a time. And the first three speakers are Emily Coleman, Terry Potter, and Brenda L. Jones.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board, and Dr. Kizner. My name is Emily Coleman, and I'm a sped driver for Stafford County, and I reside in the Hartwood District. I'd like to start by thanking Dr. Kizner and Barry Suddeth for starting this conversation about bus drivers and bus attendants' pay in years of service back in August. Barry presented a lot of facts and data to all of you. Because of that report, Dr. Kizner realized that we at Transportation needed help. So, his response was to present us with a bunch of different options. I personally rallied for raising the starting pay for $1.58, by $1.58, plus 5% across the board. And my thinking was that, hey, we're getting something. We need to take it before they change their minds. But roughly half of drivers and bus attendants supported taking one of the options, and roughly half wanted to scrap everything and fight for what we actually needed. And I don't mind saying that I was on the wrong side of that. So, I've also never been quite so happy to be wrong. We've raised our voices before, and we've begged and pleaded for funding and resources and help. But until Dr. Kizner and his administration came along, we got nowhere. So, thank you, Dr. Kizner, Chris Fulmer, members Chase and Young, Barry Suddeth, and the countless others, principals, counselors, everybody, that supported this. And that brings me to a whole huge stack of note cards. Each one, there are about 216, represents an individual who supports us drivers and bus attendants in our fight for a living wage and recognition of full years of service. Some are here, but most couldn't be. For some, they're in their parent-teacher conferences. Some are working their second or even third jobs. And for some, this is the only family time that they get. So, we obviously have the support of Dr. Kizner and his teams. We have the support of our fellow educators. And we also have the support of the Stafford community. But the question is, ladies and gentlemen of the school board, do we have your support? Thank you very much for your time and consideration.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the board, Dr. Kizner, Madam Chair. My name's Terry Potter, and I live in Dr. Chase's district, the Falmouth District. I'm a 25-year bus driver and trainer. Yesterday, Dr. Chase had the pleasure of riding with me for my afternoon route. Or should I say, I had the pleasure. It was a long and noisy afternoon for Dr. Chase, I'm sure. Anyway, I'm here tonight to speak about the long overdue revision of our bus driver and bus attendant pay scales. First, I would like to thank Barry Suddeth, Dr. Kizner, and Chris Fulmer and his team for their hard work on this project. For years, we've been told that there was no money in the budget for pay increases and that you valued us greatly. But by the actions of this board, you showed that it was not enough to give the pay increases that we deserved. We've been given empty promises that after we raise starting pay this year, we get more drivers in the door, then we can give the veteran drivers and attendants a pay increase next year. Many of us have suffered through the pay banding and compression of the scale to, again, increase starting pay. Well, what has happened is that while we are getting new hires in at the increased pay rate, veteran drivers and attendants are unable to pay their bills and have been left feeling devalued and unappreciated. They're leaving to go elsewhere, whether it be driving in another county or going into a classroom. Some are just taking that CDL that this county has paid for and paid them to get, I might add, and leaving bus driving altogether. This new pay scale will help with recruitment, because we will be more competitive at the starting pay to draw potential bus drivers and attendants to Stafford. But more importantly, this also makes us competitive at the 5-, 10-, and 20-year levels to attract experienced drivers and attendants to stay in Stafford where they live. Creating a pay scale that accurately compensates us for our years of service will also make us competitive enough that some drivers and attendants will come to work for Stafford instead of driving through Stafford to get to Prince William or Fairfax. I would also like to thank you for creating a separate lead driver trainer pay scale that accurately compensates your lead drivers and trainers for their advanced training and extra duties that are performed. This was presented to the Fab Committee last week, and they agreed wholeheartedly that we deserve an increase in pay and to be properly credited and compensated for all of our years of service. Our hope is that you agree with us and the Fab Committee, and we'll commit tonight to show your bus drivers and attendants that you value us and our years of service. Stafford used to have a quote, "Live, work, and play in Stafford." Well, tonight, you have the opportunity to make all of that possible. Please vote yes for the proposed pay scale. Thank you.
After Ms. Jones, Laura Brewer, and Ben Marks.
Good evening, board members, superintendent, Madam Chair, vice. My name is Brenda Jones. I live in 48 Chestnut Drive, Acquire District. And I thank you for this opportunity to speak here tonight. I'm a school bus driver for Stafford County, and I've been driving for over 24 years. I take my job very seriously. And it would be great if we had a pay increase to allow the drivers, the attendants, and the teachers to continue helping with our students to reach their goals. We are given more tasks without a conversation. And our parents and students don't know that we are routinely caused to change this at the drop of a hat without any say-so about it. But we continue to work daily, and we should have a pay increase. We deserve it. So, thank you again for the opportunity to speak on this behalf. Parents, PS, our parents and students need consistency. Thank you.
Laura Brewer, Garrisonville District. This is my 24th year driving a bus. I want to thank the board for moving the item in question tonight from information from action to information in the September meeting, allowing more time to seek out a proposal that was fair to all drivers and attendants. I appreciate the fact that you took the comments from drivers and attendants into consideration. By deferring the vote until tonight, you will be better equipped to make an informed decision rather than apply a paperclip fix. You gave Dr. Kizner a considerable task with a tight timeframe when you requested he come back with a proposal that would address the current bus driver shortage as well as plan for a long-term driver retention. Dr. Kizner and Mr. Fulmer met with drivers, attendants, administrators, and HR representatives, taking our feedback, comments, and suggestions into consideration as they move forward by creating a pay scale where veteran drivers and attendants with many years of experience feel valued, appreciated, and respected. This proposal addresses the current driver shortage by increasing the new driver pay to 17.34 an hour. This brings Stafford County new driver pay above Spotsylvania and Falkir counties. This higher rate of pay will entice new applicants to Stafford County versus the surrounding counties. Another highlight to point out is that Stafford County will now accept and apply all years of service to drivers from other counties, applying to Stafford versus the current three years. This alone will entice drivers who left Stafford to drive in other counties to come home, as well as attracting current school bus drivers from other counties currently... That currently hold a CDL. We will get road-ready drivers who will require very little training. Long-term retention is addressed as well by creating a pay scale. All drivers and attendants will be paid fairly accordingly to years of service, unlike currently, where new drivers make only a few cents less than drivers who have been here five-plus years. The long hours of work that Dr. Kizner, Mr. Fulmer, and their staff put in is truly appreciated. You asked, and he delivered. Drivers and attendants would like to see a unanimous vote in favor of item 10.1 across the board this evening. Thank you.
After Mr. Marks, Harry Mack and Sherri Neal.
Hello, ladies and gentlemen. My name's Ben Marks. I live at 2252 Parlor Road, Beaver Dam, Virginia. My wife's a 25-year bus driver. You know, I don't know if this is just about the pay, but anyway, she's literally broken her back for this county, okay? Last year, she literally had to beat on the door to get her run, okay? You know, going into February, she gets called into the office... You know, going into February, she gets called into the office, okay, 25 years. She's never had a midday. She gets thrown in front of her, "Take it or leave it. Take it or leave it." You know, to me, I got, you know, to see her, you know, to see her every day, you know, it's nonsense. And, you know, I don't know who James is, but I think we need to start there, you know, because there's women coming out of the office in tears. You know, there's no sense in it, you know? Like you say, she's literally broken her back for this, you know? There's another one, Jackie, there, just, you know? Why, I mean, who's in charge of y'all? I mean, is he in charge of Mr. Berry? I mean, you know, it's like, oh, well, we can't do nothing. Well, you know, somebody has to do something. You know what I'm saying? And get as far as pay, you know? You got Stafford County cop cars, hey, kid, head at the boat lot. You got a fleet freedom up there of explorers? Well, what's the problem? You know what I'm saying? What's the problem with the pay? That's about all I got to say. Thank you.
Hello, I'm Harry Mack. I live at 105 Dogwood Drive, Fredericksburg, Virginia, and I'm from the George Washington District. And first of all, I don't have a yellow shirt, but of course, I support the bus drivers getting an adequate pay. I came here today, though, to talk about last Friday. Last Friday at Stafford High School, we had 42 subs. And I understand that training is important, and I understand that we have to meet requirements to train, but I cannot be in a building with 42 subs when also all the APs were out for a meeting. Please, when you schedule the training, don't do it on Mondays and Fridays when we have the majority of our subs anyway. And the last thing I'd like to say, that having lived in George Washington District, I'd like to say thank you to Dwayne McCosker for his wonderful service to our students and staff.
After Sheri Neal, Susan Randall will speak.
Hi, good evening, members of the board, Dr. Kizner. Well, I'll keep it short and sweet tonight. I come to you this evening to ask that you all vote to pass the new pay that puts the county in a direction of a livable wage for school bus drivers and school bus attendants. While we all know that this is not the only solution to our shortage, it is a step in a good, it's a step in, a good step in the right direction, my apologies. As we continue to work hand in hand to make driving a bus in Stafford more appealing, I'm sure we can agree that there are many things that need to be addressed and, more importantly, fixed. Just to name a few things. Why is it that full-time contracted drivers cannot get enough hours to fulfill their six-and-a-half-hour full-time contract and having to do a midday, which is an annex from school to school, an evening activity run, or even a field trip that we don't get the full credit for, the full time for, the extra money? We do those things. We do the foil trips. We do CBIs. We do these things for extra. Unfortunately, we don't get that because we owe the county time. It's not our fault that they are not able to accommodate a six-and-a-half-hour contract. Secondly, why, when timesheets are turned in, they're being altered? We're encouraged to make copies of the original and keep for our records, but it doesn't matter because the times are changed regardless and without prior knowledge. That's against the law. I can go on. I can continue to go on and on as to why, but we know that there are too many. What is most important right now is that you approve the pay increase so that we can keep new drivers.
Thank you, Ms. Neal.
Thank you.
You're welcome to hand in the comments for the record if you'd like. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Susan Randall. I'm from the George Washington District, and I would like to speak a little bit on behalf of bus drivers this evening as well. I would also like to thank you for looking into and addressing the bus driver pay shortages. This has been a rough two months for the drivers, which has also been a ripple-out effect for your teachers, for your students, and for your parents. My hope is that by the end of this evening, we can take at least one step into moving forward and improving the situation that we have in front of us, and that in the future, we act with more foresight and not reacting in hindsight. But still, in the conversations that I've had with bus drivers and that I've heard and witnessed in the last few weeks, we still need to continue with this deep dive into conversations with drivers and administrators that has yielded many concerns. Some of them were graphically shared a few weeks ago. Some of the concerns that I've heard, as similar to the speaker that just spoke, is that the perception is that there are different rules and different ways for different years of service, and we're not talking just the ones who have just begun, but those that have five years, different set for 10, and not even in that increment, but just saying that it goes all the way up. These are perceptions. Obviously, I would just say this so that it's out there to have as part of a conversation. There has been sentiment that pay could be affected by incidents, driver incidents, that routes were redone so late, they were assigned late, and many drivers were still not clear as to the route, their timing, and that, of course, affected many, again, teachers, parents, and students. This type of scheduling, I feel, should be done at an earlier time, both for the drivers and for the families. There was a lot of angst enough when we did a huge elementary redistricting. It really would have helped to have a little bit more heads-up on the transportation side of the story. I won't repeat, but the full-time six-and-a-half hours was something that came up in that how some drivers now, instead of having to report to work two times a day, are having to report three times a day, which is affecting appointments, childcare, and the like, and I think that needs to be looked at. Discipline issues. Some schools are waiting seven referrals in before they handle things from a driver's referrals, and then others are handling it right away. Restorative justice. This is training that you're offering for teachers, but are you offering it for your drivers? Thank you.
All right, is there anyone else in the room who'd like to address the board? So please come forward. And after you speak, there's a sign-up sheet on this slide there.
Good evening, Madam Chair, school board members. Dr. Kizner, my name is Sharon Foley, 49 Fountain Drive, Acquia District, and I'm here tonight as a parent, as somebody who's had students in Stafford County schools since 2004 and a student on buses since 2004. As a parent, I urge you to pass this pay increase to allow our bus drivers the dignity of earning a living wage. For those Nats fans in the room, a baseball analogy, if you build it, they will come. Well, you can build a school, you can put the teachers in it, but without those red-yellow shirts out there, nobody's coming. Thank you.
Hello, George Legel, 35, Winckley Lane. Yes, I'm a bus driver, and I know you knew me, you've seen me before. I'd like to thank Dr. Kizner, Chris Fulmer, for putting together this group, this committee that we have. This is just the start of something amazing. Stafford County should be the prototype. People are watching Stafford County. We stay out here all day long, getting these kids to school and home. We bust our butts for y'all, for every parent, for every child in Stafford County. Not one. Not yours, not yours, not yours, all of them. This is a long time coming. I've only been here for seven years, and it has been a downhill slide that whole time. So again, I would like to thank you, Dr. Kizner, Chris Fulmer. Y'all have done a great job. I'd like to thank the Fab for supporting us. And like I said, this is just the start. The disciplinary committee should do wonders. Okay, restorative justice, that's the new term. So is trauma. We deal with kids with trauma every single day. And that's a lot of training that y'all really don't know about. When you get on a bus with 60 kids who fight on the playground before they even get on the bus, we have to handle that. We have first-day training. We have a whole lot of different trainings that might turn your stomach a little bit. So I'm asking everybody to vote yes for this. And like I said, this is just the beginning. We have a long ways to go. And I am wearing the yellow paperclips for our teachers who cannot be here. One actually showed up, so I will pass it off because I believe he will be the next speaker. He has some infatuation with paperclips. I don't know what it is. But the yellow because he's been here representing us every time that we've been here. And he had his conferences today, his last one, seven, he did not think he was going to be here and time to speak. So this was for him. Thank you.
I guess it would be right if I didn't have paperclips. All right, Jeff Trigger, 518 Clint Lane. I'm here as an educator, talking to you about the importance of-
What district are you from?
The George Washington District. Thank you very much.
Oh, I'm sorry. I just doubled checking, sorry.
Didn't hear you. Didn't hear you.
I just want to talk as an educator. I'm a little bit angered that I hear bus drivers are not, quote, "making their hours." I have several buses that I have counted up to 10 times now who have made not one but two runs in the afternoon to pick kids up. That's kind of frustrating. Those bus drivers are our first contact, they're our last contact. The kids are getting here late, they're going home late, and I am not blaming the bus drivers. I know they're busting hump. There is no way they're not making their contract hours. Not a chance that they're not making their contract hours. I'm a coach. I coach track, so I get a little bit upset when I hear that three cross-country events get canceled because there's not transportation. I'm sick and tired of hearing that bus routes aren't covered because there's just not enough. So these people are picking up the slack. That's why these kids are getting home late. That's why they're getting to school late. These people bust their humps for us. They come out and they always fight for the teachers. So as a teacher, I'm here to fight for them. Tonight, you've got to pass this legislation to make sure that all of our bus drivers get the respect that they deserve from year one to year 35. They come here every day, and they do it every day, and they take home all the kids, all of them. I can't do my job without them, so please take care of our bus drivers tonight.
Mr. Trigger, would you please sign in? Everybody, after you speak, sign in, please. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Matthew Lentz. I'm from the George Washington District.
Say that again.
Matthew Lentz. I'm from the George Washington District, the same one as Dwayne. Anyway, I'm speaking on behalf of our wonderful bus drivers, and you've heard several people say several important things. I want to leave a personal anecdote with you. I was a student who took the bus to school, and the very first person I saw in the morning was my bus driver. The very last person I saw at the end of the day was my bus driver. When she wasn't my bus driver, I didn't feel comfortable. I didn't know what to do. We were like, where's Pat? Where's Pat? But she was our bus driver. She had dialogue with us every single day to and from school. She asked us how our day was, what we wanted to do, what we wanted to study. She encouraged me to go into education. The consistency that she gave me as a child helped me, created me to be the person that I am today. And without her, I would have been a very different person. She saw that I was safe, and I went to and from school safely. We need the consistency for our children. We need them to feel comfortable. We need them to look forward to coming to school and being greeted with that smile and being let off the bus with that smile as well. So please consider the effect that our bus drivers have on our children's education. Thank you.
Mr. Lentz, if you could please sign in. Okay, the next person coming down, just remind the person leaving me, please.
I'll sign him in.
Okay, no, he has to sign himself in. Thank you.
Good afternoon, members of the board, or good evening, members of the board. My name is Christian Peabody. I'm the president of Stafford Education Association. There's nothing I can say that really speaks above and beyond what these incredible drivers have come out to speak. I would like to share an anecdotal story myself. So growing up, there was a lot of knock-down, drag-out fights in my family every morning, every night. And I have four, three older brothers, and we had the same bus driver from kindergarten all the way through eighth grade. And by the time she got to me, she knew what had happened or what I was going to go back home to. And it was like Matt Lentz said, it was that driver giving me that consistency, that safety. It was that driver calling the school ahead of time, saying, "This is what's going on with Christian, just a heads up." There's nothing we could ever do to thank these angels, these better angels of our natures for what they do. And what you guys have before you tonight, and thanks again, Dr. Kizner, Mr. Fulmer, is the way the Commonwealth is going to move in these next few years. And this shows what you're actually capable, what we're capable of getting done when we engage employees. This entire week and a half, two weeks, I've heard from so many drivers saying, "We've never seen anything like this before. We never thought anything like this would happen, ever, and look what they're about to do for us." How many people get to say that tonight? And like George Legel said, too, the entire Commonwealth is watching, once again, Stafford, we get to be this crazy, new, daring, out-of-the-box model, live and in time for our employees, which directly affects our students as well. So the only thing I can add is that, please, again, unanimous vote, thank you guys so much for going above and beyond, turning around, and really showing that community, you know what it's like to work at the speed and accuracy that educators are asked for every day, and you're about to do something incredible and life-changing. So thank you so much for what you're about to do tonight. Thank you, guys.
Okay, Mr. Peabody. Thank you, Ms. Medawar.
Oh, good evening. I also feel compelled to speak on behalf of our bus drivers, not just because of, we're finally addressing it, but because of the years that I've watched them line up out here asking for that pay increase and to feel valued as your employees. They have always stood in support of the teachers.
Madam Chair, who are you and what district?
I'm Carol Medawar, and I am from the George Washington District.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to make sure.
I think you're taking-
He's taking into your three minutes about-
So most of what I had written down has already been said, so I just want to share that as I walked in today, one of the bus drivers that drove my three- I walked in today, one of the bus drivers that drove my three girls came over, and they've been driving themselves to high school for quite a while. And she came over and she wanted to know how my girls were, and I want you to know how much that meant to me because there were years that she did, that she was, you know, that person that saw them in the morning and saw them as they came back to me. And that, it really matters to our kids, and it matters that we value our employees. And so more than anything else, I'm really glad that we stopped the process of just trying to put a Band-Aid and let's make, let's raise the beginning salaries so we can attract some people here, but then we lose them. And I hope that we can continue to take a look at our other support personnel, our paraprofessionals and whatnot, so that we can take a look at their salaries and their salary scale, and do the same kind of thing, and get their input, and make them feel valued. And it sounds like also from the comments that came before me, that we have some work to do in addition to pay, but to increase the working environment and the climate that the bus drivers have on their bus. And so I would just can, hope that you continue sort of what you started by listening, listening to the people who do the work day in and day out. And as a longtime educator here, I just, I'm really excited that it sounds as if we're turning a corner. I really appreciate Dr. Kizner's leadership on this and not just saying, let's just raise the pay, get some more drivers in, and then continue the same cycle. So I, you know, and Dr. Fulmer, I mean, Chris Fulmer, for, you know, also doing it in the HR. So thank you so much. I really hope, as you've heard over and over again, that you're going to pass this unanimously tonight. It is a first step in the right direction, and we can, hopefully can continue to move forward in a positive direction. Thank you.
Signing in.
George Washington. They would have said their name? I wouldn't have said anything.
Good evening, members of the board. My name is Michelle Wickman. I'm at 305 Bentley Court in Stafford. I just want to reiterate what George and Christian said. People are watching Stafford, you guys, and they're not watching because it's a train wreck, you know? They're watching for good things. And that hasn't always been the case in the five years that I've been working here, six years, geez. So I just, I want to say that I'm really proud of these guys sitting behind me, and I'm proud of you guys. C-5W, this was collaboration at its finest. I don't know that I've ever seen something happen so quickly and go so well like this. We're really on the right path here, and I know that you guys are going to do the right thing tonight so that we continue on that path. Thank you for your work.
My name is Michelle.
Thank you all.
Collaboration.
That's right.
Good evening. My name's Jackie Erickson. I live in the Garrisonville District. I've been driving a bus, and I'm in my 30th year now with Stafford County. I would like to say thank you to Dr. Kizner and to Mr. Fulmer for organizing the committee meetings for bus driver recruitment and retention. It was nice to be able to work together and for them not only to listen, but to actually hear what we were saying. We're not often included in decisions and appreciate the opportunity to be part of the solution to the continued problem of our driver shortage. It's nice to be considered as part of the team. I feel the new pay scale Mr. Fulmer and his colleagues came up with will fairly compensate us for our years of experience and has been a long time coming. It will help tremendously, not only with getting new drivers, but also experienced drivers that will now be drawn in by wages that reward their experience. As Stafford continues to grow, so do the challenges and responsibilities of driving a bus. It is time to reward all the years of dedication we have given to the students of Stafford County Schools. I came across this quote and wanted to share it with you. While it may be true that the best advertising is word of mouth, never lose sight of the fact that it can also be the worst. Thank you.
Now, this speaker, I'm sure will tell us what district he's from. Please.
We can tell.
Welcome, Mr. Waldowski.
Paul Waldowski, 8 Pickin Lane. I'm the chairman of the 2030 Cicadas. Some of you won't be on the board in 2030. And I'm in the gerrymandered Rock Hill District. I don't own any property in the gerrymandered George Washington District. It's two weeks from Election Day, but more importantly, today is my baby brother's birthday. He's 62 years old, and he was an Army Ranger. Happy birthday, David. The NAACP held a forum for people who are running for office, and I want to educate each of you in this room that there are constitutional officers in this county, the sheriff, who provides that safety for our bus drivers, the Commonwealth attorney, the treasurer, the clerk of the court, which is an eight-year entity, and of course, the commissioner of the Lebanon. At the NAACP candidates, I made the organizer aware that the Board of Supervisors, the School Board, the Plenary Commissioners, who are not elected, they're selected, need to be on the same stage. They only get asked to be voted in the office from a district level, whereas the sheriff gets voted in from a county level, as do the other constitutional officers. Just remember, in two weeks, we are going to have the lame duck session. And one of the things that disturbed me most at that forum was someone was saying we're going to have a sixth high school. And I'm not opposed to a sixth high school. We should have had one near Boyd Stafford High School. However, you saw the numbers, 29,576. You're not using the 2020 census. And from what I read on Facebook, you're trying to put where the airport is, near Center Pork. And I'm not mispronouncing it, it really is that. The bus drivers provided the thunder today, but the voters in two weeks are going to provide the lightning. So be careful how you vote. Everyone is watching you. And let me close by giving you a new quote I've come up with. Mathematics changes history. And every S is a dollar sign. So the more dollars signs you give the bus drivers-
Thank you, Mr. Waldowski.
-the more changes they can make.
Is there anyone else that would like to address the board?
Here's your red, white, and blue Halloween candy.
Seeing no one else, we'll close the citizen comment period, come to the board for board reports. Are there any board committee reports? Ms. Hazard? Oh, Jamie.
Oh, I'm the chairman now.
Ms. Decatur.
Man, I got to stop doing stuff that my fellow peers here convinced me to do. I'm sorry. I'll give the committee report next time. I didn't realize that I'm the chair, chair now. Well, I'll give you a brief overview. We, we went over whether or not we were going to increase or remove the cap on the advisory committees. Thank you. And we also had a brief discussion on campaigning within our school buildings, what constitutes that, and gave some guidance to Dr. Kizner for him to bring something back to the board at a later time. Sorry, you just caught me off guard.
All right, Legislative Committee? Or Fab?
Fab.
Ms. Young.
Thank you, Chairman Healy.
That's the Finance and Budget Committee.
On TV again?
Oh, the Fab, Finance and Budget Committee, met on October the 14th, and staff presented recommendations for the bus drivers and monitors and attendants. The Fab supports the recommendation that is coming to the full board tonight. Budget priorities were also discussed at our last board meeting. The Fab has asked to come up with three top priorities. We changed the heading from priorities slash goals to only goals. We separated the three priorities, the top three priorities, which will also be presented tonight to the board. We discussed the quarterly report, can't talk tonight, and the year-end reporting was discussed and, which was also presented tonight by the staff, Chris Fulmer's staff. The year-end purchase order listing, or the encumbrance listing, we talked about that earlier, that needs to be approved by the board. And so we also had a brief update on Ferry Farm. Mr. McCosker, I'm talking. Thank you.
She's talking about the George Washington District, Mr. McCosker?
Yes, and he wasn't listening, so I'm done with you.
Oh, okay. Back on, back on track.
I get that a lot from the women in my life.
All right. I'm sorry, Ms. Young. Go ahead.
I'm done.
You're done? You really are done? Oh, okay.
Yeah, but I was done.
All right, are there any other committee reports? No? We come to superintendent comments.
Okay, I have a few things. First of all, just to stay with the theme of bus and transportation, we are in School Bus Safety Week, and I do want to applaud them, and I definitely want to applaud the driver that's going to drive me Friday morning because I'm riding the bus, and I know they will be very safe with me on the bus day. So I look forward to that. We have things in our school system going on truly seven days a week. There's not a Saturday that doesn't go by that some school or multiple schools are having events. But I do want to share real quickly, this past Sunday at the hospital, there was a public-private partnership where some of our technology companies, it was kind of spearheaded by G-Cube, which is a company on Garrisonville Road, and we had a lot of our elementary to high school students there and our parents, and they were learning about virtual learning, and they were doing technology and art, and it was great. I grew up playing chess. If anybody ever wants to play chess, I would love to play with chess because I'm really good. But, but these kids were amazing, watching elementary kids play chess, which is, you heard about math, it's spatial recognition, and it's math and so on. But anyway, my whole point really saying is Sunday, and we had members of the Board of Supervisors there, and it was really a really great community event, and it was really put on by members of our community. So I do want to bring that up. So I gave all of you, it's also on board docs yesterday, the state superintendent and the president of the State Board of Education. I've been sharing with you on and off that the state board was going to adopt new standards of quality, well, they actually did that last week. And the PowerPoint that was presented to this, all the superintendents yesterday in Charlottesville is what I am sharing with you. I would tell you, when you get time, and we'll spend time talking about this more, when you look at Slide 2, just so you understand, the dollar figures that they have in front of them, they have the state and the local contribution, that's above in what they're already paying. So these are not the, the total amount, it's the increase. The key thing I just want to bring up, our school division has, I could only speak for the last 14 months, really been focusing on equity and excellence. And when you look at this PowerPoint, you're going to see that the state is restructuring how they are going to support positions and support funding around the equity model. And so you see a new fund that's called the Equity Fund, which is bringing in other funds that we see as like at-risk funding and lottery funding. It's all going to fall under equity, and school systems are going to be, not challenged, they're going to be required to make gains based on the individual needs of children. And again, when you get a chance to look at the PowerPoint, you'll understand a little bit more of what I'm speaking about. I do want to say, and again, I always offer you, and I'll be glad to, we have copies, this is a book that our entire leadership team is reading, Teachers and Administrators: Excellence Through Equity, and we're learning about schools and school systems that have truly done an exceptional job improving the results for all children. And it doesn't happen overnight. When you read the book, if you choose to read the book, each chapter talks about another school or school division. So I would then just, if you want to, when you get a chance, there's a lot on class size reduction, there's a lot on English language teachers, reading specialists, psychologists, and social workers. But if you turn to page, when you get a chance, Slide 17 gives you, again, a summary of the, of the major changes. The next step is that the State Board of Education has a legal authority and responsibility of adopting the standards of quality, but it's a general assembly that would have to fund the standards of quality. So there's still a lot of communication. I will tell you, we also heard from five key general assembly members, they, they spoke after this presentation, and I think these five seem pretty safe that they're going to win the November election. And there was a lot of interest in trying to support this. So education in Virginia, I think, is going in a healthy direction. And I reached out to all of you. After the November election, I would like to schedule our general assembly members, we did this last year, to tour our schools, and this gives us a chance to have more of a personal conversation. So anyway, there's a lot of great things happening in our school system, there's a lot of challenges, as you heard, and I think the state is being a partner in the, in the direction that we are, we are, we are already going. They're, they're going that same direction. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Kizner. Do we have a motion for the consent agenda?
Move to approve the consent agenda?
Second.
Motion by Dr. Chase, second by Ms. Young. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all pose. Motion carries unanimously. Brings us to action item 10.01, approval of an adjustment to bus driver and bus attendant hourly pay rates to address retention and recruitment. Do we have a motion?
Motion, move to approve.
Motion by Ms. Young. Have a second. Second by Ms. Decatur. Discussion. Do, does the Fab want to give their report? I know we've-
Wait, wait, just did the report. You want me to do it again?
Well, did you want to say anything?
We put this as a recommendation. We want to make sure that the bus drivers are, you know, driving the buses, and so we recommend to pass this.
Thank you. Ms. Decatur, do you have any remarks?
Sure. This has been a long time coming, and I'm honored to support it. And I know that when we, when we, first of all, thank you, Dr. Kizner. It, it takes a lot to make a big move like this, and I'm just, I'm really proud. And thank you to the Fab for doing this without me because I wasn't there. So I appreciate that.
Inspire.
There's a lot I want to say, you know? We've still got a lot of work to do, so I, I love to celebrate these milestones, but I'm also a little bit cautious to do so because there's a lot of other, you know, employees that we still have to reach, but I'm so thrilled to be making the first step because it's got to start somewhere.
Thank you. Ms. Hazard? I was just going to go down the line.
I didn't want to jump. I am happy to support this, and I want to thank the group that met with me. You all know who you are. Several weeks ago, that was very helpful to me. I do think that this is a start. However, I, I always want to say, what can we do from this? I think passing it tonight is important, but I think what do, what are we going to say about why we passed it and why we had to pass it mid-year? The reason we have to pass it mid-year is because we aren't getting sufficient funding from our, our Board of Supervisors. We are, we keep talking about that we are the lowest in our per pupil. You all are included in that per pupil portion of our budget. If we don't use this momentum, because I, I have been on the board long enough to know how the game is played, wow, how did you find the money in your budget mid-year? We had to find it because it is important, but we shouldn't have to scrape to, to do this. What I need for you all is this great energy, is many of you all live in this district, many of you drivers live here. Make sure that your Board of Supervisor knows, why were we here? Because we need to be funded. And I'm not saying there aren't other things, but busing is huge. It's the only way we move from point A to point B. So I love that we're here, but I hate that we were here in a crisis mode because it does come down to funding. And I know how this is going to be spun tomorrow with how the money, oh, now you have to find a million dollars before you start next year. I've heard it all before, but you all have to make sure that you make sure that you say, we needed this money, and we've needed it for years. This is why we're here. So I love that you're here, but there is another venue to sit in. So, Mr. McCosker, I know you and I tracked last week on this. So again, I am thrilled that we are starting here. So, again, I am thrilled that we are starting here, but if the message from this is just, we paid our bus drivers, then we did not succeed, in my opinion, because we have to show why we need this and why it's critical as we grow. On another point, which my board members will probably groan, I have asked every year, we need to be buying more buses, we just cannot keep increasing 500 kids, 600 kids, and say, we're fine with the buses. Now, what is a challenge to me is hearing about this contract issue, and the group I met with tried to explain it to me, you know I'm not a math, but I tried. But I would want to say this, if we're going to be Stafford and we're going to lead the way with buses, then let's have the best darn fleet we can, let's have the most modern fleet. So what I'm saying is, I don't want to just replace them. We don't want to just replace them, we want to be having the best buses on, that we can to recruit as well. I would love to, and I apologize, I know we didn't put that in the budget priorities. If I could go back and amend, I would, but I truly believe that that is another recruiting tool for us, because I certainly, most of you all know what I drive because of what I am, I would love to drive a 2020, well, okay, 2019, whatever's out there, you can tell I don't buy cars very often. I would love to buy the newer model, and if I could work somewhere, I could buy the newer model, I might leave driving my 10- or 15-year-old bus. So, for that, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hazard. Ms. Egan?
I'll echo what these guys have said, this has been a long time coming, as long as I've been on the board, this has been a budget discussion item every single budget year. And every single budget year, we never got any of what we eventually asked for at the end of the process. We were told, you're going to have to cut some of your, you know, budget out in order to, you know, get what you need. But anyway, that's water under the bridge, if we can do this, I'm ecstatic that we're finally doing it for you guys. Thank you to the couple of emails that I got from you guys inviting me to go out on the bus with you, I just started a new job, and I, as you know, well, no, we've been working for 30 years, I just started a new job at my age and working in an office with a bunch of millennials, and they're like, you have to go do what? So I'm not able to do it, but I'll catch you next year.
I beg your pardon, who?
Sorry?
Millennials?
I'm sorry, but you're considered an elder millennial. I have just a few questions. One of the speakers had mentioned that people are coming in, getting their CDLs, and then going elsewhere. Do we have anything in our employment contracts that require them to, if we pay for your CDL and you leave within the first two years, then you have to pay us back for all the money that we put out for your training? Do we have any of that? And if we don't, is there something that we can put in there to require them to do it?
I know that's something that we looked into in past years, and we'll have to get that answer back, but I remember it wasn't a simple answer.
Okay, so if we could just revisit that, because it's, I mean, it's, I don't blame you for your frustration, it's like you guys stuck it out, and here people are taking the benefit of our taxpayers' money and contributing to another community, and that's wrong. Anyway, the other thing we talked about the last time was, it wasn't just salary being the issue, and we talked a little bit about it tonight from some of the speakers, about the environment on the school bus and discipline. And I heard some rumblings about that there's been a committee put together. We don't have to get into it tonight, but I would like an update on where we're at with that. We have policies in place, and if we've got different schools doing, handling things differently, then maybe we need to look at our policy again and figure out, okay, how do we put, make this even across the board? I mean, discipline, justice, whatever it is, has to be equal for everyone, so let's take a look at that. As far as Ms. Niels, she presented a couple of questions that I would certainly like to get the answers to myself. So again, if we could go back and look at the tape, or look at some of the minutes, and answer some of those questions, and I'm sure some of the members on the school board would also like to know what those answers are. And lastly, how are we addressing the shortage that we have right now? We talked a little bit about contract employees, how are we, how are we kind of filling the gap that we have currently? Because I got a phone call the other day saying Sean's bus wasn't coming, so.
Do you want me to answer it this way for another minute?
Just that one.
Okay.
Just that one.
So, and I know Barry's in the room, I think I saw Barry in the room, but we do have, was it seven drivers? We have a handful of drivers that are going through the training, we have some drivers that have been on medical leave that'll be returning. It is true, as you heard about Friday substitutes, one of our challenges are when drivers, for whatever reason, sick day, personal day, whatever, do not, do not come to drive. So we, even when we could be better staffed, we're still going to have this turnover issue because, shortage issue, because of drivers. The other thing we are looking at, and this is why we have a request for qualifications out there to get a consulting, so one of the things we're also looking is our routing, okay? I have to just tell you, that I think is going to be a big part of the long-term solution to see if our routing could be adjusted, which might, which may require to have less double runs and things of that nature. So there's multiple things happening. What I feel good about, what hopefully, I think you're going to make a decision any minute, but this will keep drivers, this will also make it appealing to drivers in other school divisions to look at us. And it is true, the other part that I don't want to lose sight of, we are increasing the starting salary. So now people who may want to consider Spotsy, or I think somebody mentioned Faukeer County, should stay and look at us, okay? And then we do have to improve the working conditions and other things that people talked about. So not only do they come here, but they find this is a place where they enjoy working.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. McCosker?
Oh, thank you very much. So, all right. So we've thanked Dr. Kizner, and when we hired him, we knew that this is the kind of guy, along with his staff, that gets stuff done, and this is a perfect example of it. Personally, you know, and I'm very happy to the board members to step in and go for the ride-alongs and all that, and that's great stuff. But Doc, you know, once again, you, short timeframe, you came through with the thing, you know, we all know that we're going to support this, I think, you know, I don't see, I don't hear any, I don't hear any gnashing of teeth up here, so it's going to get supported tonight. So what you need to do is, we need to take this, I think, and we need to move forward with it, and then, but this is a perfect example, if anything is, if we're going to learn anything from this, it's the involvement that Ms. Hazard and some of the speakers talked about, the folks coming out here and going to the Board of Supervisors and letting them know that, hey, this, we're not going to put up with this. We need to get, we need to get paid the right salaries, and, you know, Dr. Kizner and his staff, that's their job to make sure that the working conditions and the senior leaders in the building, and, and as you know, if the senior leaders aren't doing their job, well, this guy will, he'll move you, he'll give you an opportunity to excel someplace else. So that's exactly what we need. So I'm going to be supporting this, thanks.
Thank you. Dr. Chase?
Yeah, so I just wanted to thank Terry Potter for letting me ride along yesterday and get, you know, I'm all for experiential learning, and it's very good to get the experience. I'm really happy that this proposal addresses attendant pay as well as bus driver pay. And I would really like, moving forward for us, to see if we can't get more attendants on the buses, because that was an interesting, eye-opening experience yesterday, to see 50 little elementary school students and the bus driver driving, and at the same time needing to address discipline way in the back of the bus. And, you know, when I hear that we have, bus drivers have an incident, and then they can't drive for us anymore, well, if there was an attendant, maybe that incident wouldn't happen, and that bus driver would be able to keep driving for us. You know, another thing that really struck me was the fact that a lot of children don't thank their bus driver when they get off the bus, and that was a real surprise to me, as somebody who always thanked the bus driver, even if it's the public city bus driver, an appreciation for that service. And so that's something that maybe parents need to speak with their children about, or maybe teachers need to reinforce with their students. Yeah, being polite, being civil, that kind of thing. And then I want to address something that Ms. Hazard said, just to add to, which is, where is the money coming from? And I don't want people out there in the public to think that we just came up with this money. Where this money is coming from is what we call salary lapse, so we have those 50 unfilled teacher positions that are being paid for with paras or subs. And so at the end of the year, there will be less carryover money than there is this year, and that means there will be less money to pay for maybe some building maintenance or some other project. So it's not free money, it's not money that we just kind of created. We are making, we are making a decision here to have less money for something else later, and so I don't want people to come away with the thought that, that there was some magic money somewhere, so, and I will also be supporting this.
It's called Rob Peter, the PayPal.
Yeah, we don't, we don't do those kinds of things here. I'm going to be supporting this, I'm very happy that Dr. Kizner, you and Mr. Fulmer and your crew were able to pull this together so quickly. I think it was imperative that we take action and that we do it immediately, and I see this as the first step. Certainly, the pay is very important, and as everyone said, it's been a long time coming. I'm sorry it took so long. But there are a lot of other issues. I know you're on them, but this discipline really concerns me that we are having issues on the buses that are not being acknowledged or action-taking with respect to them. And I mean, I haven't just heard it from the speakers coming here, I've heard it from, you know, other bus drivers and attendants about issues on the buses that are not being addressed at the school level. I know you started, you've already started that discussion, you know, at the administrator level, but I would like to get a report at the next meeting about where we are on that, and what action is being taken, and what's being done to make a change. Because we can have the best pay in the region, but if it is a miserable experience to drive that bus, people are not going to stay. And that's what we're aiming for. Besides these wonderful people that have stuck with us, we want to attract new people who are going to make this a career, because this is a career. I tell you, I've been speaking to a lot of people, at least in my district, and I'm encouraging anybody who is retired to consider being a bus driver. Some of them are laughing me off, but I am. I mean, I think it certainly is a challenge, but, but we need to have something good to offer. And it's, the pay is very important, but it's not all of it. I think we are all, you know, in agreement with that. So if we could get a report on where we are, you know, with respect to the discipline in terms of having it be uniform, it doesn't, it shouldn't matter what school you go to as to how an infraction is going to be addressed, as well as the other issues that have been brought up. I think that would be very helpful, just, you know, I know we're meeting again in maybe what, three weeks, but we're only going to have one meeting in November and one meeting in December. So if we could get an interim report, I think that'd be helpful. We've got this momentum going, and we need it to keep going and not just come to a halt. Thank you. All right, everybody's had a chance to speak. Can we call for the question? All in favor of the motion to approve, please say aye.
Aye.
All oppose. Motion carries unanimously. So anyone, anyone in yellow is free to leave. Go watch the Nats game, or do something fun. You're welcome, thank you all. I think we ought to applaud for our bus drivers.
All right, that brings us to 10.02.
Motion to approve the division-wide subject area textbook adoption committees?
Second. All right, motion by Dr. Chase, second by Ms. Hazard, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All oppose, motion carries unanimously. 10.03, Dr. Chase?
So move to approve a proposed revision to Commonwealth Governor's School policy
Second.
with regard to requirements for CGS diplomacy. Just to be clear, this is for next year, right?
Next year.
Yes. Yes, and we can thank Dr. Chase for that, because the original proposal was this year, and that was just unreasonable.
Hey, I do have one question on this.
Ms. Hazard?
And I may have missed it when I was reading, but it says, what is considered a passing grade, is the culminating project just pass/fail anyway? And I'm sorry, not to know.
Oh, no, I thought it was a letter grade, and so passing would be a D or higher.
Okay, just how it was written, I wasn't sure, you know, some projects are pass/fail. If there's something on that, I know it still has to go further, I'm good.
And that grade is a four-year, well, depending on when you join CGS, if you join as a freshman, it's four quarter grades, each year is a quarter. If you join as a sophomore, then there'd only be three, if you join as a junior, it's two.
It was just more when you all were discussing kind of the details, I just, I'm fine with this, but I didn't understand if it was a pass/fail.
And it's for students that start in the governor's school the next school year. Any other questions? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All oppose, motion carries unanimously. 10.04, approval of proposed addendum to the superintendent's employment contract.
I move to approve, we're kind of busy here.
Second.
All right, motion by Mr. McCosker, second by Ms. Young, are there any questions? This is just procedural, this is to carry forth the intent of the contract, the, what is it called?
The VRS adjustment.
VRS, came out with some new language, and we're adjusting the language, there's actually no dollar impact on here at all. So, all right, we have a motion to approve. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All oppose, motion carries unanimously. Information items. Approval of renewal of the annual maintenance and support contract with EdjuPoint Educational Systems for the Synergy Student Information System and the amount of $201,000 from budgeted FY '20 operating funds. This will be coming back at the next meeting for action. If anyone has any questions, please send them to Dr. Kizner, and he'll share the questions and answers with the board. All right, 11.02, approval of the school board's FY '21 budget priorities. Now, this is on for information. Are we under any time restraints to approve this this evening?
I think, oh, go ahead, Mr. Fulmer said it.
No, there isn't, but at the last meeting, you did ask us to bring this back. You either said, there's no hurry, bring it in November if we have to, but we thought it was imperative that we at least have something, and we worked on it, the Fab did, and we wanted to make sure that everyone saw where we were with the per pupil expenditure versus Prince William's Pennsylvania, even the state median or the state average were below every single one of them, and what it would take to at least be in between Prince William and Pennsylvania.
Can I ask a question about that?
Yeah.
So the last two, number two and three, I can just look at it and say, okay, this is how we can do this. How do you increase the per pupil expenditure? Because that is a combination of both, yeah, I mean, there's a lot of factors involved.
Yeah, there's a lot of factors involved, and I think this was the same question, I'm not sure who asked it at the last meeting. Was it you or Ms. Hazard?
Anyone.
But, yeah, but there's a lot of factors, and I think Dr. Kizner was the one that was going to look into it. It was not something that you could just drill down and say, it's cost, or it's, you know, given such, I just looked at the percentages, and that's the amount of money that is needed. So how we come up with it, I don't know.
Yeah, I think that was me that was talking about, how do you get after?
Yeah, yes, okay.
Exactly, and that was back to Dr. Kizner, when, how do you think we should get after this? Because it is, it's probably going to be at a state level, you know, you got the state funding, you got locals. I didn't want to talk about it tonight, I'm just-
Right, yeah, yeah, because you don't get there overnight, and it's going to take a long time to get to a better place, but we got to set a goal.
Right, but it's listed, again, it's, I thought we were changing the title of the document to Budget Goals, it still says Budget Priorities, and if it's, we're listing it as a priority, we have to explain how we're going to get there.
We passed the goals.
So, the goals are all of the goals. These priorities are also goals, but they're the priorities within all the goals, and we were supposed to choose three, and these are the three that the Fab decided. So all are important, these are just the top.
Okay.
And then when we, when we talk about priorities, we're thinking, what is a priority in terms of being able to help all teachers, all students, everyone, administrators, because, yeah, they need raises too. So, yeah, it's about every single person, it's not just about bus drivers or new buses, it's about how do we lift it so that everyone could be accommodated?
Ms. Hazard?
I'll make it short. As you all know, we did, we put that per pupil-
As you all know, we did, we put that per pupil in the legislative as well. My concern about using this as just our only priorities, I'm wondering if there's a way we can work in number one with like the twos and threes and maybe even a four, because to me, we go across and we present the budget. If we look at the Board of Supervisors and just say, we want to increase per pupil expenditure, their answer is going to be, how? Or what, what do you want to do? To me, I still think, I still think that the transportation portion should be one of our priorities because we have shown this is just a start. We also have to show them how committed we are to it. I like this, but I'm wondering if there's a way to get at it, if in our budget book, that this is in there, but we kind of use that as a theme for every word that we use, to compete with X, or to say, to raise us to the top half of per pupil when we say, we want to pay our teachers X. That would get us to 50%. Let's give it and kind of beat it through. Does that make any sense?
So one thing I maybe just to offer, to think about, we only were able to get halfway on that compensation study. If we went full way, that would have been about a half a million dollars. If we could demonstrate the things that the board really wanted, but we had to defer, and if that was approved, what would our per pupil expenditure look like? So you're getting there, not just, you're getting there by accomplishing things that you as a board did approve through your budgetary process, but were not, but was unable to be fully funded by the Board of Supervisors. So I think I agree, if I understand your comment, is that just putting the numbers there is not going to be very attractive for the Board of Supervisors, but to show what we would be able to accomplish by having these numbers, by having these positions or programs or whatever, whatever falls under the per pupil expenditure, then the per pupil expenditure would go up. So we could flush it out more, yeah.
Sort of that, if we don't do this, we remain at 121. That's an effective statement.
Yeah.
And that's the reason why I put it there, so we could just look at it.
Okay, well, we could also, Ms. Hazard, we could say that the budget priority is to increase the per pupil expenditure in order to accomplish all these other things. And if that is, and I think that's going there, because we really can't do any of these without additional funding, so.
We have to have a line item that we're asking for, to say, we want to move from 121. How do we do that? We want to make sure that we have a full fleet of buses. We want to make sure we have modern facilities. We want to make sure, blah, 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 and then compare each of those categories where we are right now. But either way, you can put it first or second.
Yeah, and I totally agree with both Dr. Kizner and Ms. Hazard, but what the Fab was looking at is really the total profile of the graduate. What does it take to get that graduate with a C5W and also with what is coming down the pike? And I think Dr. Kizner already put somebody in place for the, I think it's called, the 21st Century Workplace Readiness Skills, where, you know, Commonwealth is asking that the person or the student have personal qualities and abilities, interpersonal skills, professional competencies. This is what CTE is already giving their kids, but now the rest of the students need to have that, and this is where I think is important, where perhaps CTE, everybody should have a CTE class where they could get those skills. And so looking at the profile of a child and saying, okay, to get to that profile, that graduate, these are the things that we need, and there will be the items that Ms. Hazard talked about and the ones that Dr. Kizner is planning on flushing out. So we're all saying the same things, but I think we just need the detail that Irene, I mean, Hollaback is looking for. Sorry, I got tired.
Real quick, 2-0 Houston.
Does the, oh, darn, does the Fab meet before November 12?
Mr. Fulmer? Do you have my calendar? I'm just kidding.
No, the reason I'm asking is perhaps this could come-
I should know, right?
Dr. Kizner could present something to the Fab, and then you can go back to us.
Yeah, I think we have one-
We can put it on, if you feel it's ready for action, you know, put it on for action at the next meeting.
Sure.
If you're not ready, then put it on for information.
Okay, yeah.
We do that, okay.
Sure, Chairman.
All right, well, hearing nothing else, we're done.
Okay. This for me?
Yeah.
Oh, love letter?
Yeah. Hey, Irene, I have something for you.